Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Canton Township Regular Board Meeting on May 13th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Segrist, can you please take roll call?
All right. Trustee Borninski.
Good evening.
Trustee Ansari.
Good evening.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is present and says good evening. Trustee Ganguly.
Good evening.
And Supervisor Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
All present and accounted for.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Ganguly, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We also have our Youth Advisory Council back there. So he's present also. Welcome. Okay, do we have any presentations, recognitions, or formal resolutions?
On consent calendar, we have a formal resolution. So we're just going to do this a little bit differently from now on. So there would be no need to second or vote it because it's on consent. So I'll just read it now.
Yes.
Kind of exciting. Okay, never mind. Okay, there it is. Resolution declaring the month of May Arbor Month in Canton Township. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the country and the world. Whereas trees provide the following benefits. Absorb pollutant gases and fine particulate matter, improving air and water quality and reducing odors and acidification and produce oxygen. Reduce atmospheric carbon dioxide by absorbing and sequestering carbon dioxide and by reducing demand for heating and cooling. Stabilize soil and reduce topsoil erosion with their root systems and canopy protection. Absorb filter and reduce stormwater runoff, improving water quality and reducing flooding infrastructure costs. Shade and cool ground surfaces, reducing cooling costs and ozone in the lower atmosphere and improving quality of life for humans and animals. Provide shelter, habitat, and food for wildlife, including pollinators that are essential for food crops and fruits. Provide a variety of recreational and educational opportunities for people of all ages and abilities. Trees along streets provide natural traffic calming and aesthetic beauty. Trees are renewable resource, providing paper, wood for construction, fuel for fires, and countless other products. Trees in Canton increase property values, enhance economic vitality, and beautify our community. Trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas Canton has acted to preserve and enhance trees and woodlands throughout the community and whereas Canton aspires to be a Tree City USA recognized community, now therefore be it resolved that the Canton Charter Township Board of Trustees proclaims the month of May as Arbor Month in Canton and urges all citizens, residents, businesses, and property owners to celebrate Arbor Month and support efforts to protect and enhance our trees and woodlands. And further resolved that all citizens, residents, businesses, and property owners are encouraged to plant trees and to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this generation and future generations.
Thank you. So we don't have to, as Clerk Segrist said, we do not are not going to support it now? I mean, but we will at our next meeting. Thank you. So do we have any board or commission reports? Trustee Foster?
I will just mention that we had our Planning Commission meeting, which the Planning Commission approved the master plan and recommended to pass it along to the Township Board. And so the Township Board will be voting on that in June.
Thank you. Any others? Diane?
We had our Senior Advisory Council. It was very productive. We had roundtable discussion. We are going to be doing a survey to increase the participation of the 55-plus club to see, we want to do marketing to see exactly what programs our 55-plus would like. Some of our 55-plus have talked about they'd like to learn more, more of the card games, refreshers on that, and they'd like to see what other folks in the community 55-plus would like to learn. And so we are going to be sending a survey out shortly. And then marketing is another concern they have. They feel like people don't know about the 55-plus. So look more in the focus and on the website about the 55-plus because we want to push that out there.
Thank you. Any others? Tanya?
We had our quarterly Cultural Commission meeting last Thursday, and we adopted the strategic plan and got a new, you know, new board there for the Cultural Commission. And we also were talking about having more events like, you know, like probably have like a get-to-know Canton bus tour kind of new ideas coming up where, you know, when new people come into Canton, we introduce them to such events. So those are the things we talked about, kind of new, some new good ideas came from the discussions.
Thank you. Any others? Just some quick ones. The Technology Committee had their beginning of their appathon on Friday, and so there were two charities. There was Goodfellows and the Optimist Club, and they presented how they would need some apps or any kind of databases to be formed for them so they could help the community. So there are approximately 18 participants, some teams, some team members representing teams. And so next Saturday, they're going to present their ideas and their applications, and they'll be judged and win prizes. The Sustainability Committee is working with the Chamber of Commerce, and they are developing a, basically a rubric to go to different businesses to see if they are sustainable. And so each business is going to fill out whether they're a restaurant, or they're a grocery store, or any various retail establishments, and they can rate themselves, and then the committee will go there and determine their sustainability and provide, you know, advertisements and incentives, and they get a big sticker saying they're sustainable Canton also. So that's something that's happening. All right, thank you. Does the YAC committee want to? Anything from you? Status?
So basically, we have our fundraiser at Chipotle, which is at June 3rd from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. Plan orders which will benefit our endowment. Any funds will benefit our endowment.
That's June 3rd, you said?
Yeah.
June 3rd at Chipotle. Is there a certain time? I'm sorry, did you say the time?
Yeah, I said from 4:00 to 8:00 PM.
4:00 to 8:00 PM, great. How much are, what percentage are you getting? 25%? Okay. Oh, there are flyers on the back. Okay, great, thank you. Everybody go to Chipotle that day? Thank you. All right, thank you. Next, our public comments on agenda items only. Public comments on agenda items only. Please come up to the podium if you have public items to discuss. I'm going to look online also. Any hands on, online, if you have any public comments on agenda items, you can electronically raise your hand. Seeing none? All right, thank you. Next, we have approval of minutes for April 15th, 2025, and April 22nd, 2025.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt or approve the minutes of April 15th, 2025, and April 22nd, 2025, as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Now the Treasurers report and payment of bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
I will support that.
Motion by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Clerk Segrist. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Now we have the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
Oh, I typically read everything that's in there, don't I?
Yes, I was like, whoa!
Sorry.
I thought I paused for a moment.
It's been a week, it's only Tuesday.
Okay.
Consider, consider approval of a budget transfer for the Leisure Services and Community Development Department. C2, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to remove and replace the HVAC and boiler systems at the Administration Building, Fleet Services, Summit on the Park, Village Theater, and Human Services Building. C3, request budget amendments to the 2025 Capital Improvement Plan. C4, consider approval to purchase replacement server hardware. C5, consider approving the Police Academy costs for three candidates. C6, consider approving a purchase order to Fishbeck Incorporated for Construction Engineering Services on the 2025 Major Roads Improvement Program. C7, consider approval of a resolution for the Wayne County Department of Public Service 2025 Water Main Capital Improvement Project. C8, resolution declaring the month of May as Arbor Month in Canton Township. And C9, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to replace the UPS batteries at the police station with an associated amendment to the 2025 E911 budget. C10, consider approval of a purchase order for Roofing Technology Associates for the Roofing Consulting Services for roof replacements at Village Theater, Cherry Hill School, and the Bartlett Travis House. C11, consider authorization of permit for 2025 Liberty Fest Firework Display. C12, consider a so, authorization of a permit for fireworks display in October. And C13, consider approval of updated poverty exemption application for tax board review.
Now I support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Moving on to the general calendar, consider preliminary planned development district for Viva Bene, which means the Great Life, right?
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt Resolution 25-15 to approve the preliminary planned development district for Viva Bene with conditions.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninski. The applicant proposes to construct a housing for the elderly use at the southwest corner Ford Road and Gorman Road, located between Beck Road and Canton Center Road. The proposed housing for the elderly use consists of 180 units on 17.25 acres, which are proposed as follows. 140 units of independent living in the main three-story building and 40 attached cottage units, 17 two-unit cottage buildings and two three-unit cottage buildings. The site is currently zoned R1 and R3. Housing for the elderly is a special land use in the R1 and R3 districts, and the proposed planned development district application is consistent with the zoning requirements for housing for the elderly with the exception of the modifications proposed pursuant to Section 27.04 of the zoning ordinance. Each PDD is required to demonstrate definite benefits to the community. The major benefits proposed for Viva Bene are as follows. Paving of Gorman Road to the site's entrance, including reconstruction of the approach to three lanes with dedicated right and left turns from Gorman Road onto Ford Road. Number two, extending the sidewalk along the south side of Ford Road eastward about 620 feet to the connecting, to connect to the existing sidewalk in front of Bell Tire, so that will eliminate that gap. Item three, adding northbound and southbound right turn lanes at the intersection of Canton Center Road and Ford Road to permit overlap phases for northbound and southbound right turns. Number four, I'm sorry, one, two, whatever, one, two, three, four, and maintain over 25% of the site as open space. Creating outdoor recreation areas for residents of the development that will include a swimming pool, pickleball courts, bocce courts, and a dog park, and architectural design of the buildings. At its meeting on April 7th, 2025, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the preliminary PDD. Director Norwood, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add at this point, but Community Planner Patrick Sloan is here also to answer any questions we might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, do you have anything to add?
Sure, just a few summaries on our report to the board for this case. A little bit of history on this one. This site used to be the Monarch Grove PDD, which was approved in 2021. And the Monarch Grove PDD was also a housing for the elderly, and it had 225 units. So the proposed 180 units is 45 fewer units. The previous Monarch Grove development plan had a mix of independent living, assisted living, and memory care. And the proposal with Viva Bene is 100% independent living. The proposal is for 180 units that are broken down by 140 units that are in the main building and an additional 40 units that are proposed in the elderly cottages around the periphery of the development. With the access management of the plan, we noted that the, the drive frontage along Gorman Road between Ford Road and the driveway will be paved, and the lanes will be three at the intersection of Ford Road so that there will be a dedicated left turn lane from Gorman onto Ford. There will also be a proposed right in, right out along Ford Road where visitors and residents can make a right turn in, a right turn out to relieve some of the traffic from Ford and Gorman. The applicants have also submitted a traffic impact study that reviewed the traffic along Ford Road, including at the intersections of Ford and Beck and Ford and Canton Center. And where there was a level of service that was below an acceptable level of service of D, there are proposed mitigation measures. So for example, the right turn lanes for northbound right and southbound right going on Canton Center at the intersection of Ford Road, there are some backups there during some of the peak times. So to alleviate that, the applicants propose to install right turn lights, dedicated right turn arrows at those lights to help move the right turning traffic at that intersection a little bit better. Finally, the last thing I want to mention on this development proposal is that there's a proposed modification from the 50% brick requirement. The zoning ordinance requires the residential units to have 50% brick on the facade, and that's using the entire facade as the denominator, including any openings for doors or windows. So of that total facade area, the ordinance requires 50% brick. The applicant is requesting a modification to lower the brick percentage on a number of different sides and including the overall building. For the overall building, the proposed percentage of brick and stone is just under 32% with a, with a fiber cement of 38%, and then the remainder of 30% of the facade for windows. On Sheet A100, the applicant summarizes the material percentages for each side of the building. The main building has a winding, kind of a serpentine shape, and the percentages along each side are a little bit different. So there's more brick and a higher brick percentage on some of those primary facades. So for example, the main building, the primary facades are the two sides on the north closest to Ford Road. Those combined for just over 48% brick and stone. And the side on the east side closest to Gorman has about 53.7% brick and stone. So where those sides are visible, the brick percentages are a little bit higher. And on those interior walls that face each other that aren't as visible from the outside, those are the sites where the percentage of fiber cement is higher. If the modification to the brick requirement is approved to be less than 50% for the overall building, we would recommend at least the following two changes. First, we would recommend that the amount of brick and stone on the two north facades be increased to 50% at least. And because the development will be highly visible from Ford Road and the homes in Cobblestone Ridge to the west and south have 50% brick, we would recommend a higher percentage of brick and stone on the west and south sides of the main building and on the cottage buildings. At this point in the development review process, this is the preliminary PDD. If the preliminary PDD is approved, the next step will be to go to final PDD review, which will require a public hearing by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission would make a recommendation on the final PDD, and the board would take action on the final PDD. And the proposed resolution that we presented, we've included three conditions. The first is satisfactory review of the traffic study by MDOT in Wayne County. The second are some minor updates to the PDD agreement to update the exhibits. And the third recommended condition is deferring a final decision on the modification request to the building material standards for the 50% masonry. And this is just an option for the Township Board. The Township Board may either require the 50% brick or permit the modification that's presented this evening in the plans. But not knowing how the board may vote on this, we included this third condition of deferring a final decision in the event that the rest of the development may be okay, but if there's still a discussion to be had or the board wants to defer a final decision on the building material modification, then that's included as number three as the condition in the proposed resolution. So that concludes our staff report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Summer, do you want to give an update?
I will say not much to add in addition to what the Community Planner Patrick brought up, and the Planning Commission minutes are in the board packet. But I, the Planning Commission did have a lot of concerns about traffic in this area, so I will just note that. And also note that I think the YAC committee also had a question about this, RBA.
Thank you. Yeah, while I'm loading the files to share with everybody, I know our YAC, would you like to ask your question?
Our question was answered.
About the traffic, is there, about the traffic?
Yeah.
Okay. So you get an answer to it? Okay. I'm pulling up just the facade so everybody can look at it, but in the meantime, are there any other questions? Kate?
Yeah. Patrick, am I correct in thinking that when this came to us before, when it was Monarch Grove, that they were going to be paying for some Eagle credits or wetlands? Wetland mitigation credits?
Yes, that's correct. There was a proposal for Eagle credits to be purchased and because there were some wetland filling on the site and wetlands that are subject to Eagle regulation. And our understanding is that those credits have been purchased.
Okay, and so they're transferring to the new company?
Yes.
Okay. I am wondering, and I don't know if anybody has the answer to this tonight, but it's my understanding that when you purchase credits for wetland mitigation through Eagle, that the wetland mitigation may not be taking place anywhere near the project. And so I'm wondering if it's possible for the developer to request that Eagle spend those credits within Canton?
They can request that. I think Eagle, they'll look either ideally in the same community, but if not, the same, the same watershed or the same Eagle region.
Okay.
But we can, we can ask to see where that mitigation is proposed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? So there's a follow-up, I guess, to what Kate is saying. So if the credits are bought elsewhere and they are filling in some of the wetlands...
Be anywhere within the state, is my understanding.
Yeah. Then how does that help Canton in that area? Because we do have flooding on Ford Road. Oh, in 2023, we did.
When it comes to the, the wetlands, because they're subject to Eagle regulation, the mitigation would be wherever Eagle allows. With regard to the flooding, we've mentioned the flooding to the applicants, and when they get to the design of the pond, we've asked to try to maximize the size of the pond.
The pond in the draw, and I'm going to pull the drawings up actually here, if I can, if everybody can see them.
If I'm looking at it correctly, I think it's along Ford Road, it looked like.
Oh, the pond is on Ford Road, near Ford Road?
Is that correct? Patrick, is the, is the pond along, like, parallel to Ford Road?
Can you see the drawings, Patrick?
Or is that Gorman? Maybe it's Gorman. On one side of the...
Yeah, there's actually, there's actually two there, and I believe...
One on the south side?
Yeah, I believe the north pond might be outletting to Ford Road, and the south pond might be outletting southward into Wayne County system. So there's an opportunity there, and depending on what the engineering...
Yeah, I think that would be, would be wise. There's a Bella Hubbard map of Canton from the 18, 18, I think 18. One of the first people who walked this land, what's interesting is that the Fellows Creek used to be on the south side of Ford Road, not the north side of Ford Road, which is part of the reason why a lot of the homes north of Ford Road are losing their, they're losing their yard because, you know, nature wants to go back to where it was. They, they pushed it north over by the Taco Bell and by Meyer, and this whole area was swamp. So there probably would be some wisdom in putting in some excess stormwater management, especially given what happened on the Fellows Creek a few years ago, and the potential for a massive wastewater treatment plant just down the, just down the creek a couple miles.
We see it better on this. I'm trying to figure out which drawing would show it the best. Patrick, of the packet, do you know which drawing would show it the best?
Of the ponds?
Yes.
Probably on page five of 34 of the plan set.
Four, page five. Okay, where I had it then.
Yeah.
Page eight?
Page eight might be clearer.
Is that Kate?
Yeah.
Okay. Page eight. Yeah. So where are the ponds on this? Let me see, down here.
The one on the right-hand side and one on the bottom there.
On the southern end, I think, and one on the east side.
Okay.
So I was wrong about Ford Road, but it looks like one along Gorman and one on the south side.
Any questions about this part of it before I go to the facade?
Is, is there a concern for, you know, the Cobble's, what is this, Cobble Ridge subdivision with the detention pond in the back there? Is there a concern for flooding in that area because it backs to that subdivision there?
The, the areas around the perimeter of the, Jason to Cobblestone Ridge are proposed to be low area, proposed to be low areas with catch...
Yeah, that microphone probably works better, right?
Around the periphery of the site, along the western boundary and the southern boundary, the areas behind those detached units, they're proposed to be lower areas, and they'll have catch basins in their backyards. So the water will flow to those catch basins, and those catch basins will capture the water and direct it to the pond. So anything that may run towards Cobblestone Ridge will be caught by those basins. And the way that it's graded, it'll be graded so that the water is directed to those onsite catch basins and then directed underground to the pond.
Any questions about the pond area? So while you're up there, Patrick, so let's look at the facade. So here's, I believe, is this basically what we're looking at for the facade, or what slide do you think we should look at the best to see the differences?
So that is probably, probably the best 3D... So that is probably, probably the best 3D representation. In terms of the color, on page 16 of 34 is probably the best place to start in terms of the main building.
It doesn't, oh, there we go, there we go. Eight, 12, 16. Okay.
There you go. And then because of the shape of the building in the upper right corner, there, there's a top-down view of the building that has arrows pointing to which side that you're looking at. So there's a little bit of back and forth when looking at the images of knowing which, which side that you're looking at. But this is the first of, I think, first of three pages that show all of the side elevations of the proposed building.
So where you're seeing the sides along Ford Road and along Gorman Road, you're going to see the most brick, is that correct? Is that, that's the ordinance we're cause for?
Yeah, on the way, on the building designs themselves, on the north sides, there's two north sides that face Ford Road. And those have the highest percentage of brick, probably the second highest. I think that's just over 48% on that north side. And on the east side facing Gorman, that side is, I think, around 53%. So those sides that are facing the roadways and the rights-of-way, those are increased in brick. And then some of those internal sides where they're almost like alcove areas where they're not as visible, those are areas that'll have lower percentages of brick.
Okay, so the, the ordinance is 50% or greater, is that correct?
Yeah, the ordinance is 50% brick for the entire wall area. And one of the unique elements of the proposed building is that with all of the units being independent living and one of the building designs is that the units within the major building have walkout balconies. So there's large door walls, there's a lot of windows along the sides. So a large percentage of the wall area is actually windows. So the remainder of the non-window area along those walls, a much higher percentage of that area would have to be brick in order to meet the ordinance. So for example, if 30% of the wall area was windows, of that remaining, 70%, 50 would be brick and 20 could be something else. So it would be a predominantly brick building for anything that's non-window, just based on the windows that are included in this, which I think are, is a much larger window area than what was originally proposed with Monarch Grove.
And then the rest of it would be, you have windows, brick, and what else?
A fiber cement siding, like a hardy board type of siding. So not like a vinyl siding. The fiber cement is much more durable and looks nicer.
But otherwise, you're saying if we had to reach the 100, then where you're seeing this white, it would be all brick. This would be all brick, correct, from Ford Road versus the white facade?
Yeah, where it is that light, that light gray color, at least it looks light gray on the screen there, much more of that would have to be filled in with brick in order to achieve that 50%.
And the reason they're asking for this variance is due to cost?
Partially. I think part of it is, part of it is cost. The other part is building style. I know that fiber cement paneling is, is not inexpensive. It may be less expensive than brick, but sometimes, and we've heard this from other designers too, especially when they want to have a lot of windows or other types of building material features, that sometimes achieving that 50% brick requirement can take away from and detract from the overall facade of the building and make it look a little, little more institutional. On a single-family residence or on a commercial building, sometimes meeting the, meeting the brick requirement is important for something that's more multifamily in nature or housing for the elderly. Sometimes having a lot of brick gives it a little bit different feel just based on the mass of the building.
What is the price of each unit going for?
We don't, we don't have those. I know it was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting. And I think one of the base prices was starting at $1,700.
$1,700 a month? They will be expensive. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this? I mean, this is a variance request of brick. Kate?
Not about the exterior. I have another question though. Oh, okay. This might be kind of a weird question, but I was looking at the, I think it's the supplemental application materials. Viva Bene, Canton, PDD amendment narrative. six of 17 at the bottom, it's talking about benchmarks. And it's, I'm just curious about this. It says initially, we included the Berkshire Apartments, but they have not reached a stabilized tax bill by the time of filing this application. Do we know why the Berkshire Apartments have not reached a stabilized tax bill?
That may have been when they were looking at projected tax revenue for the development. They may have been looking online at the assessor's website in terms of what was available and what year something goes on the tax rolls. And sometimes it's a little difficult, like in the case of Berkshire, if it was under construction at, at the time where they're looking at their fiscal impact analysis, it's not going to reflect the total value of the property once it's completed. So my guess is they probably took that out of the analysis because if it's partially completed, it would show a much lower value than the actual build-out value.
Okay, I'm, the reason I'm asking this, it does say 2024 winter and summer tax bills. And I believe Berkshire had been completed by then. I could be wrong. But I'm just wondering if perhaps the Berkshire Apartments are not full yet?
I don't think they would be assessed or taxed based on occupancy. It would just be when it has its certificate of occupancy, where it's habitable, and then it's put onto the tax rolls and whatever that, that next tax bill is and what's available.
That makes sense. I was just, that just kind of stuck out at me, that they had removed that.
Michael?
Regarding the variance request around building materials, I also, I am comfortable with that, you know. Typically, those standards are to make sure that, that a property or development is attractive visually. And I think, you know, where you've seen that systematically removed, like in, for example, like the Cherry Hill Village District overlay, you still see a pretty high standard in quality where you don't necessarily have brick as the primary or at least 50% of the building material. And especially given the rising cost of materials and, you know, the nationwide housing crisis that we have, I'm, I'm not as married to those standards necessarily today as perhaps I would have been in the past, provided you still have the quality. And I, I do think that this is an attractive facade and an attractive building or development. So I think the request seems reasonable.
Anyone else? So there were, I think there was two decisions, right? We were just, are we voting on, in terms of just the PDD? And you said in three weeks, we're coming back again, is that correct?
Yeah, right now, it's the preliminary PDD. So the preliminary PDD would, it wouldn't finalize anything, but would give indications to the applicant so that when they proceed to final PDD, if the PDD is approved, then they'll know, they'll have some indications of what to design their final PDD to. And oftentimes, when applicants come in with a final PDD, they also concurrently apply for site plan review. So more often than not, at the time of final PDD, there are many more details. Sometimes to the level of being site plan details, like final landscaping, photometrics, more detailed engineering, which in this case would give us some more answers to the stormwater questions. More than likely, we would be seeing those types of details at final PDD here. The applicant has indicated that if the preliminary PDD is approved, then they're most likely to combine the final PDD application with a site plan application, which would provide many more details than a PDD requires because that site plan is combined in that application. So the preliminary PDD is just to give an indication of, to the applicant of the general layout, density, development pattern. And depending on how detailed the board wants to present the modification requests, the board can, can defer that or can provide comments or can, can make a decision based on the resolution.
Tonight or later on? Either one?
Either, either.
Okay, so is the board okay with moving forward with the modification request? Or do we want to save that part for a later date? And the Planning Commission did all of them? Summer?
The Planning Commission wanted to see additional information from the traffic impact study. I do not believe the Planning Commission made a decision on the, the modification of the building materials. I think that is coming before the Planning Commission for final PDD. But I'm fine with moving forward as is, I think I agree with what Clerk Segras said about the rising cost of building materials, making sure that, you know, we're upholding certain standards. But I would be interested in what the rest of the board thinks.
Tanya?
Yeah, I, my, my only concern is the traffic study. And that's, that's my main concern for this as for the building materials. You know, we, there has been a constant issue in, with, with housing crisis in the nation that building costs are going up and people are not being able to afford things. So I am fine with the facade. And, you know, I'm sure this is not the final plan. You know, the final plan will come later, right, Patrick? It's just, yeah, there will, there might be modifications made. But I am okay with the amount of brick percentage and things like that.
Yeah, my concern mainly is the traffic too. You know, I'd like to see more traffic study because I, their traffic out there is horrendous. You know, you've got that daycare center across the street and down the road is, you know, the school. So I have big concerns about the traffic there.
Kate?
Yeah, I agree about the, the traffic concerns. Also, obviously, I am concerned about stormwater management. And I don't have a problem with the facade.
All right, so do we need to amend the motive, the motion at all or no? What was the motion just for?
I made a motion to approve the resolution as presented. So there is a motion. If someone wants to make an amendment to that motion or amend the resolution, or we vote it and address it at the final, because it's still a PDD, so we have discretion. We can address it at the final PDD, which is like, you know, it sounds like it's going to be site plan and it's going to be the final PDD all at once. So we'll have all the details we need and we can go over down. I'm assuming the applicant is in the audience today? And is hearing everything we're saying? And so it sounds like we'll have stormwater and we'll have the traffic impact study. So I would prefer not to make an amended motion for the purposes of the minutes and, you know, because we have discretion when it comes back before us.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Consider preliminary site plan for Everton Reserve.
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt Resolution 25-16 to approve the preliminary site plan for Everton Reserve.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The applicant proposes to develop 62 single-family homes on a 34.68 acre site located on the north side of Cherry Hill Road and on the west side of Beck Road. The units will be detached condominiums, so the areas outside of the structures will be common elements and not individual lots. There are two entrances proposed, one from Cherry Hill Road and one from Beck Road. The allowable density of single-family dwellings in the current R2 district is up to 2.17 units per acre. And the applicant proposes a density of 1.79 units per acre. The site consists of three parcels. In 2024, one of the site's parcels was rezoned from RR Rural Residential to R2 Single Family Residential. At the time of the rezoning application, the applicant included proposed layout plan that is similar to, to the preliminary site plan proposed in this application. But fewer units are proposed on the preliminary site plan. At its meeting on March 3, 2025, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the preliminary site plan. So Director Norwood, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add, but Community Planner Patrick Stone is here. Also, answer any questions.
Thank you. Patrick, anything to add on this one?
Just a couple of updates with the locations of the access points on Cherry Hill Road and Beck Road. Those are west and north of Dodson and north and west of the intersection of Cherry Hill and Beck. And early on in the pre-application process, when the applicant was preparing the layout plan, we had encouraged two points of access, one off of Beck and one off of Cherry Hill. And among the reasons being, not only because it's required by the condominium ordinance and the fire code, but also in times when the school is busy, both with AM and PM peak traffic as well as the intersection itself, it's good to have options for people coming and going from the development. And if there's peak times either at the school or at the intersection, and if people want to try to avoid that intersection, having the two points of access allows that to happen. This, the plan also was reviewed by the Zoning Board of Appeals because there was a variance request for setbacks from a wetland. There are several wetland areas that are on the site. And the development is designed to minimize the impacts on the wetlands. The zoning ordinance requires that there be a minimum setback of 25 feet from any wetland area. And the applicants have some of the road, sidewalk and utilities in grading that are within 25 feet of a wetland. And so that, that proposal went to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the variance was approved for a setback of under 25 feet from a wetland. And the major reason for the variance request to be less than 25 feet from a wetland is that part of the wetland permitting process with Eagle, the wetland boundaries are shown as the proposed boundaries. And so by minimizing the impact on the wetlands, that required the setback variance. Otherwise, to meet the 25-foot setback, the applicants would have to expand the scope of their wetland permit and fill even more wetlands so they could meet a 25-foot setback from that new wetland area. So we encourage the applicant to minimize the wetland impacts. And it's not often we encourage an applicant to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and seek a variance. But in this case, we did because we felt it was more important to preserve more wetlands than to have the setbacks. At the same time, none of the homes are within the 25-foot wetland setback area, so it's just road sidewalks and some of the grading as well. So that'll conclude the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Summer, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Tanya?
Do we know how big those condominiums are going to be? Are there different designs or, I'm sorry, I just read this, you know, the length and the, like, how, what square footage wise or something? Is there an information on that? Comes later.
They do have some floor plans on the,
Yeah, I saw that.
On the site plan. I don't know off the top of my head, but oftentimes, homes of this size are 2,000 square feet or greater. It's a detached condo, but they're two-story, they're like Colonials. A lot of the detached condos that we see are often ranches, but these are two stories.
I was just hoping if there are any smaller houses in there that are, you know, more affordable because as, as much as we are building in Canton, if we're building houses that are at least two, like, 2,000 square feet. And sometimes the people that are coming in here are not able to afford these houses. So I was just thinking that if they had, like, different plans or is it, like, all of them same? It looks like all of them are same, double-story, right?
Yeah, I think most of their models were showing two-story, larger homes.
Michael?
I really appreciate the way you kind of walked through the variance request regarding the the setback requirement in the ordinance for the county drain. And I think like the, kind of the nuance in how you approached that and recommended that makes a lot of sense. You know, not filling in wetland to try to protect a wetland. And so I really do appreciate that. I know the Mott drain is important. It's behind my house right now. So it is very important to me personally, but also, yeah. So other than that, looks good. When we get to like final site plan, I'd be kind of curious to see what gets kind of planted along the drain there. I see that kind of running through the development. And so I imagine there will be some like, some sheeting of stormwater into the drain on that parcel. It's currently, it's currently a farm field right now. So there already is sheeting. So the water's already going into the drain anyway. Interesting, okay. Either way, I really do appreciate that and I think it makes sense. Because initially you see like a, oh, it's going to be within 25 feet of a creek. That's not good or a drain, you know. But then when you start saying, well, you know, in order to meet the 25-foot setback, you'd have to fill in wetland, it starts looking a little bit absurd. And that's kind of the importance of being nuanced when we have these rules that are designed to achieve something, but can sometimes be turned against themselves to do something else entirely.
Thanks. Other questions? Amara?
Thank you so much. I was a little bit curious about, so, you know, even in looking at the map and looking at the traffic study, this new development is sandwiched between Workman Elementary School and George Dodson. And it's to the east of Uptown Apartments and Cherry Hill Village. Could you help me understand more about the impact on traffic? Because this particular road is not that wide. There aren't too many lanes. And when there's school hours, I've seen in different areas of Canton where like traffic literally stops because of, you know, parents getting in line to pick up their kids. Could you elaborate more? Maybe there's something in the traffic study I'm not getting.
Sure, thank you. When the applicants had applied for their rezoning last year, they had submitted a traffic study by Fleece and Vandenbrink and their engineering firm. And they have, they have traffic engineers. And they had done a study of the intersection. And their traffic study showed that there weren't any impacts to that intersection that would take it below the acceptable level of service at the AM or PM peak hours. And whenever there's a traffic study submitted by an applicant, we have the township's traffic engineering consultant more often than not. But in this case, definitely, our traffic engineering consultant from Wade Trim is hired to represent the township in reviewing the applicant's traffic impact study. And our traffic engineering consultant had concurred with the applicant's traffic impact study conclusions of that there were no impacts at the intersection of Beck and Cherry Hill that would require any additional improvements to that. We understand that traffic is an issue there, especially during those AM and PM peak times at the school itself. So that'll be something that we continue to look at and the county continues to look at, including the intersection itself, whether there's any future upgrades to the signalization or widening or adding any lanes there. One other item that we'll note about this is that this is looking much more long-term is on the west end of this development, there's a stub street on the very west end. And it stops at the western property line. And that's there for a potential future connection. The property to the west, it may never develop. And if it's farmed, then that's great. But if it ever does develop, that stub is there to connect. And farther to the west in Canford Park, on its east end, it has a stub street as well. And those are there for long-term that if the property between them ever develops, there can be connections between the developments. And that would allow drivers to be able to pick the points on the road where it may be the most advantageous. So when drivers know that certain intersections are busy and they want to avoid that, they can use those cross connections to do that. And it provides a little long-term relief to the road and the surrounding intersections. But that's a much more longer perspective. But those stubs are there in the event that it's needed.
And Kate?
Yes, so I do see that in this case, they are also purchasing wetland mitigation credits through Eagle. So I have the same question about asking Eagle about mitigation within Canton, if possible. And then I am pretty concerned about Mott drain being large enough to handle water from, you know, if there is a really heavy rain. It's not, it's not a real big waterway. But just with the, with the school right there, you can see the north end of the school is very close to the drain. That's my major concern.
And on many, many of the developments that we've seen, even if it's like in this case where it's a condominium development and it's going under the base zoning without a PDD, we try to work with applicants early in the process to try to maximize the size of their ponds and to try to minimize the outletting rate. Just trying to, trying to look ahead and try to get these ponds to hold as much water as possible in the event, in the large rain events. And the outlet to the drain will also be something that the county will be looking at.
Yeah. And as far as like the variance with the setback, couldn't they also decide not to build as many units and then not have them go as close to the drain? Wouldn't that also be an option?
Based on where the wetlands are, that still would have been difficult. The, the location of the wetlands themselves, they're located along the front edges of Cherry Hill and along Beck Road. So they were actually impediments to getting a road into the upland areas. So if it was reversed where the wetlands were more interior to the site, we probably could have avoided a lot more of the impacts. But because a lot of those wetland areas are concentrated near the entrances, the permitting to get two points of access is inevitable just based on their locations. But they've strategically located those roads to kind of wind them through to try to minimize those impacts, trying to make the best of the situation that's there.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments? More to come on this one. This is just a preliminary. Okay, okay. All in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Next one is consider final site plan for Harvest Arbor.
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt Resolution 25-17 to approve the final site plan for Harvest Arbor.
Motion made by Clerk Segger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Harvest Arbor, here we go. Sorry, just catching up. The applicant proposes to develop 51 single-family homes on the 25.5 acre parcel located at the southeast corner of Ford Road and Napier Road. There is one public entrance proposed on Ford Road and one emergency vehicle access proposed on Napier Road. The property includes a creek in the southwest corner that is attributable to the Lower Rouge River. The site is vacant and has been used for agriculture for many years. In 2023, the parcel was rezoned from RA Rural Agricultural to R2 Single Family Residential. The site was previously approved for a planned development district PDD. At its meeting on June 11th, 2024, the Township Board of Trustees approved the final PDD and preliminary site plan. For condominium project, after preliminary site plan is approved, the applicant must obtain all state, county, and township permits before the final site plan can be approved. At this time, the applicant has obtained the required state and county permits. And the remaining township permits will be issued upon deposit of performance guarantees, which will take place prior to holding the pre-construction meeting. At its meeting on April 21st, 2025, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the Harvest Arbor final site plan. Director Norwood, any comments before Patrick takes it?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Well, the community planner, Patrick Stone, will take care of the questions.
Thank you. Patrick, anything to add?
Just one item is that at the preliminary site planner view for condominium projects, that's the point at which a lot of the major items are decided, like layout and building design materials, things of that nature. And then when it comes to the final site planner view for condominiums, the major thing we look for is just whether it is compliant and consistent with the preliminary site plan. And in this case, the final site plan is substantially the same as the preliminary site plan. So we've got nothing new to add on this one, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. It does look like there's a number of benefits too listed in the background if anyone hadn't read those. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, so I think it's Napier Road that's like really bumpy. It has so many potholes in it. And this is right off of West Ridge Estates if you're going to Ann Arbor. Is there a plan to get that? Who owns that road firstly? And is it going to get, right? Is it going to get fixed by the time these homes are built? Because if we're going to have access points, there is one currently that goes into West Ridge Estates from Napier Road. But I'm wondering if there's a plan for this road as well that's part of this package.
For Napier Road, there's not. Napier Road is, it's a public gravel road under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. There's an access onto Napier Road, but it's a gated emergency vehicle access only.
Got it.
The intersection of Ford and Napier, the traffic study showed that traffic coming north and south on Napier, that there are a lot of backups and anyone who's driven Napier has experienced that. So the only public access for this development is off of Ford Road. The Napier is just emergency vehicles only. So if there is an emergency situation, there's another point of access, it'll be gated.
Okay. I have driven on that road when I was leaving my mom's house a few times and it is bumpy. And there was no gate. So there was no indication that it was like a emergency-only road. So just to let you know.
Well, Napier is public. The only emergency-only gated access will be, there's a little driveway that's proposed from Napier into the development.
Into the new development, got it.
Yeah. But that won't be for public access. So people won't be able to drive in or out from that. So, so when they put that in there, it'll only be for emergency vehicles.
And this is, my understanding is it's a different development company than the Toll Brothers who've been building the West Ridge Estates house, houses, correct?
Yeah, this is a different developer, a different civil engineer also. And there's no cross connections to any adjacent developments. That was one of the first things we looked at when we discussed with the applicant during the pre-application. We looked at surrounding sites to the east and west, or east and south. And there were no stub streets or, they were all lots. So there was nowhere else to connect to try to get, you know, an adjacent point of access to try to relieve traffic somewhere.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot. Summer, did anything from the Planning Commission that you wanted to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Michael, did you ever hand up?
I was just curious because Napier is like a county boundary. So like, if it's under, is it solely under the jurisdiction of Wayne County? Or does it, they split it with Washtenaw County? And if so, wait. Yeah, Wayne and Washtenaw. Does Washtenaw grade too or just Wayne? I mean, because technically, is the, wouldn't the center line of Napier be the county boundary or? No.
Yeah, but when it, when it goes across counties, I think one county is responsible. In this case, I think it's Wayne.
Bummer.
Yeah.
It's a bummer.
I've driven it and I think there's been calls and tickets put in for grading as well.
Oh, sure. It's a hardworking crew.
Any questions or comments? Kate?
Yeah, I was reading about the wetlands on the site. And it looks like they're really just like wetland soils. But are they planning to fill any, any wetlands? I couldn't find anything about that.
There may be a permit for some, but I think if there is, I think it's minimized. One area in particular in the northeast part of the site, there was a previous version of the plan. This was probably all the way back in preliminary, maybe even preliminary PD review, where the wetland in the northeast was proposed to be filled. And then through the applicant's work with Eagle, that wetland was preserved. And I think through Eagle's authority, they've looked to minimize that as well. So they've actually redesigned the road entrance. The road entrance from Ford has actually moved a little bit westward to avoid that wetland area that's there. So there may be some filling, but if it is, it'd be minimized according to what the state allows.
Okay, so we're not talking about Eagle credits or anything?
I don't recall.
Okay. If you could find that out, please let us know. The other thing I'm wondering about is following up on Trustee Anzari's questions about the entrances. The entrance that is for emergencies, emergency vehicles only is going to, it says it's gated. So how does that work?
The Fire Department, they'll have the keys to the gate. And like a lot of residential developments and some non-residential sites that have a gated emergency vehicle only, they'll have to work with the Fire Department on getting the appropriate gate and making sure that the Fire Department has access to it. So if there's an emergency situation, they'll have, they'll have a key to that lock with them.
Okay. So that seems like that might be a delay unless they have some kind of remote access.
Yeah, to unlock, unlock the gate, primarily, they would go through the main access from Ford. It's just more expedient. But in the event they need to open up a second access or if for some reason the primary access was unavailable. But most of the times, it's a secondary access where
Where they're already, already there and then they need additional support? Okay.
In supporting Kate Brindinsky, I saw that, I know all of us were working, Kate is working with a committee on basically a wetlands ordinance to make sure that we mitigate within Canton because of the flooding. But I guess one question also is, across the street is a field in Superior Township. And would that, are they looking at maybe hopefully not affecting flooding on the site like we're seeing in some of the southwest part of Canton?
Yeah, to the, to the west in Superior Township, they have a small area at the corner that's a Montessori school. And that's a very small area, zone general commercial. Outside of that area where the field is, in Superior Township, that's zoned A1 agricultural. So it's a very low-density district. And according to Superior Township's master plan, it plans that area as agricultural lands, conservation, and rural residential. So Superior Township is very intentional in its zoning and in its future land use plan to keep that rural, keep that low density.
So Eagle will look at the mass, because I know that what we're seeing in southwest Canton is coming across the fields there, basically when we get a heavy rainfall. So you're seeing fields here also. Are we, I hope Eagle looks at that to make sure that we aren't seeing the same conditions there that we are in the southwest part, further southwest.
I'm not, I'm not sure if that would be Eagle or if that would be more of Wayne County of making sure that, or if Washtenaw County has a role to play on the west side of the road. But certainly making sure that the ditches are clear and graded so that the water doesn't go across the road. Or in the case of adding gravel to the road to slightly raise it to keep the water on its side.
So this will, we'll have to watch it carefully.
Yeah, that would be something more with the county because they would have jurisdiction over the roads, the ditches, and in some cases, the drains.
All right, thanks, Michael.
I actually had a question about the use across the street. I believe it is a combined usage of a Montessori daycare and a taxidermist. And I was wondering if when we do our nodes, are we looking at that combination in Canton as well? Just a unique combination. I've always, I'm sorry. It's just, I've always found it quite interesting. But those are the two uses on the same parcel of property. of property. Could be some opportunities for some education.
Make note of that.
Yeah, we'll take it under advisement.
And there is, oh, there is a wetland designation report also in here.
Two wetlands, wetland A and wetland, or wetland B and wetland C.
Oh, yeah.
It's like neither of them are, have houses on them.
All right. Any other questions or comments? No? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is G3, I'm sorry, 4. Consider approval to utilize ECBG funding to contract with Michigan Engineering.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order to Michigan Engineering Group and Income Power in the amount of $145,560 and the associated budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Brindinsky. In February 2025, MSD published an RFP for the procurement of EV charging stations that would be located at the administration building. The township received four responses to the RFP with Michigan Engineering Group being the top-rated group via responsible contracting scoring. Michigan Engineering Group and Income Power have presented proposals to the township to supply and install two Level 2 electric vehicle charging stations. This includes pre-planning, installation, testing, maintenance support, and the needed infrastructure changes needed to install two 100-amp breakers to ensure that both charging stations will have the optimal 19.2 kilowatt output for charging. This will be funded with an Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block grant that was pre-approved for the township of April of 2023. Now, just, I know residents might be curious, but there will be, we are deciding on the fee for this, whether it's flat fee for usage or peak time change, and there will be an 80/20 split for the revenue to the township. So just to let everyone know that. Director Norwood, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Just, it's going to be, I don't know if it's really clear in the RBA, that these are going to be located next to the sign out front, because there's already a panel there that we can use.
Yes, very close.
And DPW will be working with us on trenching to get to the two, the two units, EV charging units. And they're going to have two, two, four cars can get charged. So each one's going to have two heads on it.
So it's not going to be, it's going to be like in the parking lot here, not directly in the first parking spots, but closer to the sign?
By the sign, yeah. On the east side of parking lot.
Okay.
Out front.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments? Okay, great.
I'll make a comment. Just wanted to take, take a moment to thank John Zalinas for answering some questions on this.
Thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, this has been, I think John has been working on this for probably a couple of few years now. And I remember in the beginning, we talked about this years ago as the beginning of the Technology Committee, and I'm glad to see they're coming to fruition right now.
Yes, and just as a secondary, we have, we did do a study. We had a SEMCO grant to do a study where chargers should go throughout Canton Township on, at our parks. And there are other sites that we also chose. This one was a priority, also one at Fellows Creek is being put in right now with DTE. One concern is though, the other ones are for a grant also for $800,000. It's called the ECBG grant, and those funds have been frozen by the federal government. So that was kind of a wait and see, just to give you status on upcoming ones. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, thank you. G5, consider request to reclassify public safety clerks.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the reclassification of two public safety clerk three positions to clerk four positions within the TPOAM bargaining unit.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Okay, where am I? Oh, I'm in G. There we go. I'm catching up with menus, okay. The police and fire department directors are each requesting to upgrade one of their assigned clerk three positions to clerk four position within the TPOAM bargaining unit. Both position reclassification requests were presented to the Human Resources Director, who evaluated and subsequently justified the request as meeting the criteria to proceed. The reclassification proposals were then presented to the TPOAM Union Board, who also supported the upgrades. The finance department has estimated the cost for these reclassifications based on an estimated start date of June 1st, 2025, to be $3,137 per position. The additional amount will be expensed from the existing police and fire administrative salaries budget respectively. Director Bow or Director Stockline, do you want to add anything?
Just real quick, I guess for context, I would suggest on the police side, just so you can, you're aware of what they're actually doing, they were responsible for 16,000 tasks last year within our bureau. But the goal in the police, very similar with the fire department, is to provide some stability and return to the structure that we had many years ago. And I think that's, that will start to build out where we'll be for a long time. So you won't see many, too many more requests as it relates to the TPOAM in the department.
Thank you. Director Stockline?
Yeah, same situation, except we only have two clerks, or a clerk and a secretary right now. So having the two secretaries will make them interchangeable so that when one's on vacation, the other one can cover the work and we can keep that continuity up in the department.
Thank you. Director Howell, do you want to add anything? Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next one, consider approval of PO for Open Gov Asset Management Software.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order to Vertosoft Open Gov in the amount not to exceed $106,390.80.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. Okay, let me get this. The township is currently implementing Open Gov as a new enterprise asset management systems for Public Works and Fleet with a go-live date of May 28, 2025. The software is replacing the legacy system, CityWorks, which has been in use for over 17 years and no longer supports the operational needs of the township. Open Gov was selected after a thorough evaluation process due to its strong support for GIS integration, underground assets, and its modern cloud-based platform. The township is now requesting approval to extend the Open Gov implementation to include facilities, maintenance, engineering sidewalks, and parks and recreation. These departments were not fully supported by CityWorks and have historically relied on paper records, spreadsheets, and other informal systems to manage asset-related work. Director Norwood, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. This was a team approach to, to bring this on. We're very excited about the opportunity to bring engineering and facilities into this, this new software. It's going to help us with capital improvement planning and also with budget planning for other things within MSD. So excited about this opportunity. And also, so far, the, working with Public Works with the water and sewer system, already implementation of the Open Gov there has been going very well.
All right, thank you. Director Honberger, do you have anything to add?
Similar benefits for the Parks Department. We're excited to get this on board and see how this can improve our operations.
Thank you. Director Abegbo, ITI side?
I didn't have a question.
Thanks. This is a long time in coming and we're seeing the fruits of our labor now with IT and with all of our new updates for safety and security and efficiency. Any questions or comments?
Is this the one that will also have the permits and other requests or that's a different one?
So the, yeah, the permits will be going through a different software suite. It's BSNA.
Oh, that's BSNA.
That's also moving forward too.
Yeah.
IT has been working with, through the Building Department, engineering and planning to advance that too. Or I think we're looking at an October launch of this year.
Oh, okay. So we're going to see a permitting process, you know, changing and more efficient also?
It'd be more efficient, more informational for applicants to get better access to what they're, they're looking to do for in the township.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, Kate? Oh, sorry. Diane?
Go ahead.
I thought you were pointing at Kate.
No, that's okay. I'll just make a real quick comment. I appreciate IT. I know they've been working hard on BSNA and all the other programs and this one as well. I know Water Billing has been working on this program and it's been helping with the work orders. So I appreciate every, everyone that's been helping with it. We moved away from the CityWorks to this and it's helping our lives.
You've been working about a month on the changeover, right Diane? Yeah. Very good. Kate?
Yeah, so it says that we're going through the OmniA Cooperative contract. Can you explain what that is?
Do you want to speak to that, Victor?
Neon Cooperative. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item, consider bid for boardroom audio and video equipment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of equipment upgrades for the township boardroom that we are currently sitting in from Conference Technologies Incorporated for an amount, total amount of $94,321.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The equipment in the boardroom to be upgraded consists of wireless microphones, audio receivers, patch panels for equipment, new cameras, a new control panel, and a new video switcher in the control room. The equipment currently in the boardroom ranges from seven to 10 years old, where the recommended useful life is five years. This equipment will upgrade, upgrade will improve the quality and reliability of the boardroom for meeting and production purposes and will provide a higher quality product for all end users. A lot of people use this room. In April 25, a proposal went out to purchase and install audio and video equipment upgrades for the township boardroom. One company submitted a proposal and after careful review, Canton Community Productions recommends Conference Technologies for the boardroom upgrades, which will cost $94,321 as budgeted. Director Lefever, do you want to add anything?
Nothing more that was in the background. I think we're all ready for these upgrades. It's been a long time coming. I know we're looking forward to upgrading some of the wireless mics so that we all have them. It'll really help with study sessions, so I look forward to that. Replacing our cameras and our monitors and the switch at the podium. So it'll be a lot of nice upgrades that will really help our cable division staff provide a better production overall for all of us. So looking forward to the upgrades if approved.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Summer?
I will just note how badly this is needed. One thing I noticed is during the Planning Commission meeting, we have nine planning commissioners and they all sit up here. And some of us have these microphones and some of them have these microphones. And it's incredibly hard to hear planning commissioners when they're using some of the wireless microphones. And so oftentimes, cable will come in and say, we can't hear you. And so I think it's better for folks who are at home watching our meetings, if we make sure that, you know, our equipment is accessible and they're able to figure out why we make the decisions that we make.
Sure, yes. You want to? No? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item, Cherry Hill Village. Yay.
Madam Supervisor, I move to reallocate the committed fund balance for the Pocket Park and other future board priorities to the Cherry Hill Redevelopment Project and the associated budget amendment, and to award the Cherry Hill Village Construction Phase 1 to Fonson Company Incorporated for a total project cost of $3,256,707.71.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Through a combination of funding sources, Canton continues to design and develop the Canton Town Square project at Cherry Hill Village. The Town Square project design focuses on activating the space surrounding the Cherry Hill School. Phase 1 construction will consist of site work, utilities, a restroom building, pedestrian bridge, landscaping, and restoration. Added alternatives include a sanitary sewer extension and walkways. On January 16th, 2025, proposals were received for the Cherry Hill Village Construction Phase 1. Five bids were submitted and reviewed by a panel comprised of municipal services, community development, and finance staff. The panel evaluated each company and scored them based on the evaluation criteria provided in their request for proposals. Following responsible contracting, the two highest-scoring companies were interviewed. As a result, the panel recommends Fonson Company Incorporated for the Cherry Hill Village Construction Phase 1 with a project cost of $2,927,710.11 and alternative three pathways of $32,933.60 and an added 10% contingency of $296,064 for a total project cost of $3,256,707.71. In May 2022, the board committed the fund balance available as a result of the American Rescue Plan Act to be utilized for Pocket Park adjacent to Fire Station 2 and also as a placeholder for future board priorities. Currently, the balances remaining from those two commitments total up to $1,017,714. We are recommending that these balances be recommitted to be utilized to help offset the cost of Cherry Hill Village Redevelopment Project. Director Lefever, do you want to add anything?
That was a mouthful. Nothing really to add. This is, other than, this is the home stretch. So this is the plan that was laid out early on. And I know we're all looking forward to having the Cherry Hill Village project wrapped up. This is the final straw, final step. And hopefully a year from now, we're, we've got the whole project wrapped up and we're all celebrating the opening of the town square in Cherry Hill Village. So this is kind of the last big piece of it, big piece of the pie. So we're very excited, hoping to see this, this end of the project through.
Michael?
I have a question. I've been out of the loop a little bit on some of this stuff. But I know like as you're entering Cherry Hill Village from the south through Ridge Road, there is a monument sign there. It says Cherry Hill Village established 2003, probably was put together as part of like a public benefit, I'm assuming, when they permitted the neighborhood there. And it's, it essentially looks like a, like a pulte monument sign to a subdivision, really at a place for Cherry Hill Village. Look, just like a neighborhood sign, it looks like Glengarry sign, right? But it's just, you know, a little bit inconsistent with kind of the Cherry Hill Village feel with the new urbanism, walkability, historic, HDC. There's also like not a good monument sign if you're coming up from the south through Ridge Road, you know, where Ridge and Denton kind of mix. There's like a green street sign that says like Cherry Hill Village, this way with a, with a, with an arrow. And then there is one on the Upton property as you're coming from the west, I believe. But maybe not. It might actually say like Upton Apartments. So that, that might be what you see as you enter in. So my question is just, as we're kind of doing, somebody once told me, as we're doing all this work, like has there been any thought to like having like a gateway, like as you're entering the village, you're seeing signs that are signaling to you that you're entering the village? And is that, is there a plan for that? We had talked about it in like the initial phase concepts of Cherry Hill Village. I do know the budget is relatively tight. And then I don't think there's any signage if you're coming from the, from, from the west, if you're coming in from Cherry Hill Road out of Superior Township to indicate that you're entering Cherry Hill Village. I like when you're entering Northville, there are wooden signs that say you are entering historic Northville. And, you know, it's very bougie and very like historic, but if people like, you know, it looks nice and it makes you feel like, oh, okay, cool, I'm going into this historic area. It's setting me up for kind of what I'm, what I'm entering into. And, you know, just, I've thought about as we're doing these, these improvements, you know, it's also like, I think really important that we kind of signal to people and get them in there as well, you know? I think we've, we've learned over the last 20-something years that just building something doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be utilized by everybody, specifically this section of the township where there's no, there's no through-access point, it's, it's not easily accessible. You really don't go there unless you have a reason to go there just yet.
Right. Yeah, I guess my quick response to that would be, a lot of our conversations been about creating a destination, right? Giving people a reason to come and stay and spend time there. Creating spaces that attract people and give people a reason to meet others and spend time together and create those experiences, right? And so a lot of that's been built around creating, you know, whether it be a district or whatever term you want to use, creating that space in that village. And so these projects are the, kind of the vehicle to achieve that. And then the steps that we put- that we put in place around that through things like the service agreement with the Partnership for the Arts and the programming and the, you know, the, the space making and the, the programming that goes into that. The forethought is as we move forward and through lighting, decor, programming, branding, right, that we're focused on how do we create those spaces? And so the entrance and, and the identification is part of that discussion. So how, how do we do that? From the north, you know, if there is a roundabout greening you coming in from Ridge, right? Is that a gateway into the village from the north? And how do we demarcate that as Cherry Hill Village? So those are very, very much part of the conversation, and I think as we move forward and decide how we set that body up to help us, direct us into the future, those will be part of the conversations of what, what do those entry points look like and how do we welcome visitors into the village? So yes, very much so. We're, this is the, that phase to get us into those conversations and to really propel us forward. So, yeah, it's very exciting. We're, we're there. We're knocking on the door.
Any questions or comments? Very exciting. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Next item, consider approval to set twenty twenty-five budget for Cherry Hill, oh no, that's, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, C nine, Cherry Hill Village Town Square.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award the construction administration of the Cherry Hill Village Town Square Phase One in an amount not to exceed four hundred twenty-six thousand two hundred fifty dollars to OHM Advisors.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, the Board of Trustees approved the twenty twenty-five Cherry Hill Village budget to recognize the anticipated revenue and expenses from Wayne County ARPA, American Rescue Funds, which included construction of the factory, town square, and preservation park as well as public parking. Throughout these projects, OHM Advisors had played a key instrumental role in developing the Cherry Hill Village Square Project Concept, including engineering services and bidding assistance. To continue this significant momentum, staff recommends OHM Advisors for the construction administration for Phase One of this project in an amount of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and adding a ten percent contingency of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars totaling four hundred twenty-six thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Director Lefever, do you want to add anything to that?
Just to kind of clarify, so the last item was awarding a construction contract to the company who is going to be doing a lot of the work for us. So this item here is with OHM, which many of you know by now. We've brought many items for OHM to the board. OHM has helped us through this entire process from visioning to concepts and down to architectural and engineering services. So this part, this part of the, this RBA here, this part of the award tonight would be to award OHM the construction management and oversight of the project itself. So OHM would be helping us to actually execute the plan laid out for the town square. They would be completing the, finishing out the design, being onsite with, with the contractor and executing and making sure that everything that we set out to do actually gets done. So they've led us all the way to this point, and so this would be kind of helping them, letting them help us, you know, with the homestretch and getting us all the way home. So this is the oversight, architectural, and engineering services of the last phase of this project.
Any comments or questions? Michael?
The Phase One we're currently doing with, outside of what we just did, the last agenda item, is primarily done with the county's ARPA funding. Is that, is that correct?
The, the previous item?
No. Outside of the previous item where we reallocated funding, primarily Phase One is to be constructed and designed with, primarily with, with the county's ARPA funding? Is that accurate?
The, yes, the county, yes.
Okay, good. Because I, because I do know that there's like a deadline, that that money has to be spent, and that is this year, right? By, I think, September, if I'm not mistaken?
October, yes.
October. Better early than, than late, but yeah, okay, good. So it is imperative that we get in the ground and get started on this, and very cool.
Sure.
And I think it is important to note that, I mean, the, these funds are from the county and they are, they are funds from, from the federal government, and we had worked really hard to secure that so that they would, were spent here in Canton Township as opposed to another community.
Great. Anyone else?
So excited. So excited.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Item C ten, consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township for Summit Senior Renovations and Heritage Park Decking Replacements.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the supervisor to sign the intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township for the Summit Senior Center renovations and Heritage Park Playground decking replacements and the related budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Wayne County Parks Village was approved by voters in two thousand and two and renewed in two thousand and nine and two thousand and sixteen for seven more years. As a provision to this village, Wayne County Parks has agreed to reinvest a maximum of fifteen percent back into local communities. Annually, communities submit project proposals based on the allocated funds from the county. In combination with these grant funds, Canton requested Wayne County to use one hundred fifty thousand of awarded funds towards the relocation of the senior center and front deck, I'm sorry, desk at the summit on the park, as well as thirty thousand one hundred three dollars to be used to replace decking on Heritage Park playgrounds that show signs of wear and tear. Wayne County has agreed to allocate funding for the summit on the park senior center renovations and Heritage Park Playground decking replacements through the Wayne County Parks Village for a total amount of one hundred and eighty thousand one hundred three dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. An intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township has been drafted for approval by both governing authorities. A budget amendment is necessary. Director Hoenberger, do you want to add anything?
I think that explains it pretty well, but happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Any questions or comments? Okay. Oh, Kate?
Yeah, I, I'm excited about this because I'm always excited to see our tax dollars coming back to Canton.
Thank you. This item also had a question from our youth. Will the budget amendment lead to reduction in monetary allotment for any other areas?
Nope. Nope. So this will just be a increase in revenue coming in from the county and an increase in expense in the equal amount of what we're going to be receiving.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. The eleven, consider approval of three-year contract upon maintenance, which we need.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award the purchase of six biopod systems in the amount of twenty-five thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and award three-year service agreement to Rigero LLC for pond maintenance pending legal review.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Let's see. So Heritage Park and Pheasant Run Golf Club, I'm going to read the background, both feature numerous ponds offering tranquility and calm throughout their areas. In order to prevent algae growth, Canton previously worked with Rigero LLC on adding biopods and bubblers to a few of the ponds to see if these issues could be improved. Biopods are a product that sits on the bottom of the pond and releases bacteria, which ultimately eats away at the existing algae, and the bubblers sit on top of the water, forcing movement to keep the algae from forming on the stilled water. After a few years of trying out the products, Leisure Services staff feel they have been successful. However, due to the size of the ponds, more bubblers and treatment are needed. In February twenty-five, Leisure Services advertised a request for proposal for pond maintenance resulting in six companies submitting proposals. Staff from Leisure Services and Finance carefully reviewed and scored all the proposals based on a number of factors, including price and quality of product. As a result, Leisure Services is recommending to award a three-year contract with the option of one two-year renewal to Rigero LLC pending legal review. Additionally, Leisure Services is recommending the purchase of six more biopod systems to be installed into three ponds in Heritage Park in the amount of twenty-five thousand two hundred thirty dollars. This is a one-time cost to add units. Director Hoenberger, do you want to add anything?
Certainly, we've been at this for quite some time, trying to get these ponds, especially in Heritage Park and additionally in the golf course to look a little better with algae growth. We've been with Rigoro for several years. We've seen some improvement. Last year at Pheasant Run, we added the, the biopods on the bottom of the pond and the additional services that we're looking to add in Heritage Park here, and we saw some significant improvements within that pond. So they're going to follow that model to be adding the additional biopods on the bottom with service twice as frequently as we had been doing previously. So that's kind of what we're looking to implement here.
So we know that last year, one of the events, I think it was a night out, it got pretty stinky.
Hopefully, this will prevent that.
Okay.
But it is not a cure-all. It's not a quick fix. If you want a quick fix, it's chemicals, which we, part of this proposal and why a few companies were eliminated was they responded with heavy metal chemical treatments, which will show quick improvement in the pond, but can lead to fish kills and just other environmental issues. So we're looking for natural ways to keep the algae under control.
Well, the youth did ask, do the biopods require any regular maintenance?
Yes, and that's what the service contract is. That's where the contractor is going to come in and they add additional bacteria to those pods, which then the bacteria combined with oxygen is what feeds on the algae and then also the muck. That's the technical term for it. The muck on the bottom of the pond, which is what the algae feeds off of. So that's what the bacteria is consuming.
Okay, thanks. Michael?
I have a question. Can you, can you, can you tell me what? Because my initial thought is wanting to dig deeper ponds, right? I mean, if we're going to have ornamental ponds, which is probably a questionable choice, but cat's out of the bag there. So if we've got this issue where like they're super shallow, they heat up too fast, the water's too clear, that the algae blooms, the, you know, we dump it with fish, the fish die, you know, why don't we dig deeper ponds?
That would be an option. It would be significantly more expensive. We did that at Fellows Creek a few years ago at a, a cost of several hundred thousand dollars. And then there's a lot of environmental issues with the DNR that you have to deal with. The removed material has to stay onsite as well. So we had site location at Fellows Creek where we're able, it goes in like these hundred-yard burlap bag type structures and the material stays onsite. We really wouldn't have any place in Heritage Park. It wouldn't smell very good if you removed all that and placed it in the back of the park. So it would be significantly more expensive, and then we'd have a lot of permitting and other challenges with doing that.
I'm just thinking if we're spending twenty-five K for three years, twelve years, that's a hundred thousand dollars. So, and ultimately, so I take my kids to the fishing derby. I love it. It's a great, it's a great activity, but part of me ethically does not like dumping fish into a pond where it's essentially a kill zone. I mean, like it is, it is not good to be a fish in that pond after the fishing derby. You will die a very slow death. And I'm always like, oh, okay, like, always makes me feel a little bit guilty. Not, my kids have a good time, but it's, you know, at some point, like my question would be like, when's the inflection point of, is it, is it better to just go in and just try to solve the problem? At least the heritage ponds, the ones out, out back. That's just my thought on that, but right now, there's a stopgap, sure.
And we do have, I did have them add in the contract that there is an annual opt-out option. So if after a year or two years at any point during the contract, we want to cancel and go with another option, or we're not happy, we have that option as well.
And so you're saying to dig it out more, we'd have to dig it, I mean, that it costs money, then place the muck somewhere onsite?
That's correct.
Keep the muck. Yeah.
Stinky slitty hill.
Yeah. That's disgusting.
It won't stink in the winter when it's frozen.
If it's frozen, it won't stink. That's right.
Let's hope it gets cold enough.
You throw some field dirt on top of it, right? There you go.
The idea is that with these pods, there's several feet of muck that's growing on the bottom from years of the algae dying on the surface and falling down, and it's kind of a vicious cycle. This system eats, the bacteria eats away at the muck at the bottom, so you're actually making the ponds deeper by doing this process. So it's kind of a natural way of
There you go.
dealing with that sediment instead of removing it manually.
Aren't there fish that eat that also? Like bottom feeders or any that? I don't know if they'd survive in there though, I guess it's too warm.
Probably not that much.
Not that much. They'd have to be big fish.
They'd eat a lot of fish.
Over the years. Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. So we won't have our Congresswoman coming around saying, this really smells bad this year.
Is that what Debbie said? Oh, Debbie.
We said, we have to talk to you. Don't ask me for
As fancy as Ann Arbor, sorry.
Don't ask me, what'd she say? Don't declare this a national emergency. It's a Canton emergency. It smells bad.
Hilarious.
Item G twelve, receive and file the annual tree program report.
Madam Supervisor, I move to receive and file the annual tree program report twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, which was viewed by the Planning Commission on April twenty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Canton is responsible for the care and maintenance of more than sixty-eight hundred public trees along major streets and parks and facilities. The first annual report describes twenty twenty-four maintenance activities, describes public tree variety and health, explores funding and resources, examines benefits of these public trees, describes other tree activities, and examines a basic work plan for twenty twenty-five. It is intended to celebrate Canton's successful public tree management and serve as a resource for decision makers and the public. Planning Commission reviewed the report at its April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five meeting. Director Norwood, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. The only thing I'd like to add is our first time, our first report, so we're looking forward to more reports. But Zach Michelle's from the Planning Division, who's been working on this diligently, is certainly here to answer any questions or give you any highlights that you would like to hear.
Thanks. Zach?
Howdy, good evening. And as was mentioned, not only is this our annual report, it's our first ever annual report. We're really excited about this because when we looked around, we've never done this and no one else had done this that we've seen. So we're cutting kind of new grounds here. As mentioned, this is intended to be a resource for elected officials, for appointed officials, for staff, and for members of public. It documents where we've come from, where we're at, what we're doing, and where we intend to go. So we're very excited about that. Kind of serves as a strategic plan in reference for everyone here. I can give some highlights of the tree program, where we're at if you would like. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any comments? I know we enjoyed the tree report, the, the tree study session was very helpful and everybody was very excited about it.
And our trees are going in starting Wednesday. They were supposed to go last week, but it got really wet and they didn't want to drive their equipment over the, the soft ground, so they're coming.
Actually, in some, there are some trees that were planted that we know need replacement again because they didn't quite survive the winter, so that we, I saw some along Summit Parkway and
We found over the past couple of years, we have about a ninety-six percent survival rate, which is really good. Not all of them survive. We've shifted to planting more in the spring because it gives more opportunities for them to establish the roots. We anticipate after planting, after planting, as part of our confirmation to make sure everything is planted in a happy place, is we're also going to check previous year, previous springs for replacement. Our plantings do come with a one-year replacement warranty, so anything that we planted last year that hasn't made it will get replaced.
Okay, great. Thank you. Questions or comments? Michael?
I just want to say, this is really well done and very, very impressed, and I appreciate the work that went into this because this is an exhaustive report, fifty-two pages. I like the infographics. It's visually appealing and easy to kind of sort. You know, it's clear to see we've come a long way and that we've, we've also got a long way to go as well. Love seeing the, the calorie pair, like, I love seeing like the old numbers being really high and the, the current numbers very, very low. When I was out at, at Zibouaz, the, the nature area, three weeks ago when they were in full bloom, or four weeks ago when they were in full bloom they were in full bloom, the amount of Bradford and calorie pears that were just littered throughout that property, probably three, 400 of them that were never planted. They made their, their way there from the droppings of, of birds that have eaten that in everyone's neighborhood and all of the subdivisions. And, you know, that's the danger of planting invasive trees as street trees, you know? And that's a very invasive tree. And it's, it's, yeah. So it's kind of going to be busy getting all those off that property. It's going to be a big project.
Yes.
But, but I, so I love this report, really appreciative of it. And I know we have talked after the study session, it really, I really liked the idea of pursuing a, a potential, like a public nursery as a, as an option to try to address the ongoing and increased costs of the street tree program while we've seen the revenue in the, the tree fund decrease. But then also giving us a little bit more autonomy and control over the variety of trees we get because we are at the whims of what we can get from contractors right now. So I think that would be really cool. I know, and I know, like, we had talked that Ann Arbor has, is I think their first year of their municipal nursery, which is pretty exciting for them. And I do know that Detroit has a nonprofit, the Greening of Detroit, that, that, that runs their, their public nursery and in one of their parks. And I believe they produce over 400 trees a year out of that nursery, which is very impressive. But anyway, so I think that would be really cool to look into. Other than that, really well done, really impressive, and really grateful for the work that you've been putting in since you came to Canton.
Thank you. We, we did try to present information in lots of different ways to make it accessible to folks who interpret with graphs or with tables better. That being said, if there's any other information you would like to be in here, let us know. This is our first go at it. It's going to be interesting to see the tracking from 24 to 25 because the 19 to 24 was really tough comparisons. Yeah, the pears are tricky. And I do have a special announcement. Tomorrow at 9:30, the last Bradford pear on our streets that we're responsible for is going to be felling. I'm going to go take a picture to document it. But they do spread very, very broadly. And definitely one of the benefits to having our own nurseries supply of difficult to source trees. So this year, it was really difficult for us to get black gum. Black gum are, are beautiful trees. They're good with our kind of wet clay soils. They do well on the streets. They have little tiny berries that the critters like, but it's very hard to find them. The only reason we're able to get the limited number we did is because we put in the order with our contractor in January and they went out and harvested them across the country. Not across the country, but from our growing area.
Can I ask a question real quick? I'm sorry. How many of the trees that fell in our parks were spruce trees? Do we know that?
During the storm, I can, I can get that information. A lot of them were because it got wet and then it just flipped. We actually have documentation for every single tree that went down, including the DBH. We put in information with the state of Michigan for potential reimbursement. We're in the, the hopper. They just have to fill that up. We're, we're a couple of years behind potentially getting that.
Yeah. And I would hope like it's some, I mean, this is germane to this, but maybe with planning, when we look at like site plan approval and things like that, we, we start seeing site plans with lots of spruce on them. I really do think we have to start addressing the fact that the climate is changing and that those spruce trees just do not, I mean, they've never lived here. They, they shouldn't live here. And they will, they will grow and they will fall on cars and houses and sheds because they're just not acclimated to this climate.
And in fact, if you saw to the north of us, there were four spruce, blue spruce, Colorado spruce that were removed between the facilities or between fleet and public services. That was partly because there's a fence going there as part of the current project, but also partly because there's blight coming and it's anticipated that blue spruce in Michigan have five to 15-year life of when we can expect them to survive. So we're starting to plan ahead and, and get those out so we don't have to do them all at once.
Lot of diseased ones out there also.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, I, I love this. Thank you for putting it together. Thank you for all the time you spent on it. I especially like all the information about the different species and how we have increased our diversity and species. And also the problem trees. I think residents can get some good information from this. So thank you very much.
And in fact, the, the graph with the, our change in number of the, the pear trees, the folks at the Michigan DNR Urban and Community Forest, when they go around to other communities, that's their example. They're, they're saying be like Canton. Go out there and get those trees.
Great.
We're going to live up to our tree logo.
Mm-hmm.
It's an oak tree.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. And this is going to be online, right? On our website? Oh, great. Thank you. All right. Now we have time for, let me see. Additional public comments, additional public comments. Let me look online. If you want to comment online, please raise your hand. Additional public comments. Okay, seeing none. Anyone in the room want to comment, please, for three minutes? Let me put this up. Oh, come on. Trying to pull the app up, but it's not.
George Miller. Let's stress the tree issue. It's a wonderful thing that you guys plant trees underneath the power lines. They grow up through the years. It would be a wonderful gesture. Edison's cutting them down and I won't freeze to death or sweat to death this summer when the power's out, when the trees get into power lines. Let's go to Palmer Road in Sheldon. Water break there. I like for that covert pipe to be cleaned out. There's a bunch of sand in it. Water run there for hours. It's plugged. Maybe it'll drain off like, or it's just like every other ditch around here, drains to nowhere. Maybe that can be corrected from the water, water break. Let's go to these subdivisions at Cherry Hill and Beck Road area. Every now and then I come that way and gentleman was saying, well, the relieved some of the traffic off Cherry Hill Road, well, it can be diverted into the subdivision into the next subdivision. Well, how would you like to be going through there? And this happens all the time, three or four o'clock, the kids are getting let out, parents are picking them up, so be. And you live in that subdivision and you can't get in your drive for another 15 or 20 minutes because there's a traffic jam. Okay? And next thing is, let's go to Wetlands. The Wetlands evidently are not supposed to be touched no matter what. Barriers or anything, because we have a flood problem out here on that. And they shouldn't be filled in or varianced because these people, when they move into a place, say a subdivision, over in Lily Road, this happened before, Lily Road and Palmer Road area, the builder went in there, bought the land up there, whatever it is, 300 lots, and every other lot, he had to surrender to Wetlands. He's lucky he broke even. He developed half of his project because he had to give it to Wetlands, which was really wrong. He shouldn't have developed it in the beginning because it was all Wetlands. This is how this Wetlands is wield and deal. Now let's get over to one other thing. On this Wetlands, where we're on it, I'd like to know what the problem is. Considered, we have a 100-year rain and the ponds are taking it. And there's an overflow pipe there, for example. Then an overflow pipe goes over to a creek and somebody else gets the water. So is the engineer, civil engineers predicting the worst 100-year rain or 500-year rain like they're supposed to before that water goes over the overflow pipe? Those ponds are supposed to hold the water for a day or two so the creeks go down. So I'd like to know if that's considered and if there's a topographical survey on this stuff. That's one final word on the nuclear waste coming. I'd like to know if that's been a, a topographical survey on that. Because I've been told by environmental people, there's a creek that runs underneath that. When it was a sanitary landfill, it would be bad deal now if there's atomic waste in it. Has a topographical survey been taken?
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Hello?
Michael Schultz, Deon Street, which is right off of Sheldon. I had planned on talking about something else tonight, but yesterday afternoon, I don't know if somebody died. For sure, that car was crunched very bad on Geddes and Sheldon Road. If you are coming west to east, so if you're coming from Krogers and you want to turn onto Sheldon, you have to look to your right, you have to look to your left. Sheldon Road does not stop. You're not supposed to block the intersection. I'm an old man and I'll tell you what, I've not had an accident and I couldn't tell you when. But if you don't pay attention, people are not stopping. I don't know what's got to happen to fix that intersection. Not, not my cup of tea on that. It's a tough thing no matter what. Maybe if the, it was set back further, there was an absolute stop. If that little cutoff was changed. I don't know how many policemen were there yesterday, but there were a bunch, fire department, a bunch. And like I said, that was a, a bigger silver car. And the, the end of the trunk on that was right behind the driver's door. If somebody didn't get killed, it's, it's a tough situation, but something's got to be done about it. And then if they can fix that flood on the Middle Rouge River, that'd be another great thing, too. So that's it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Thank you. Now we'll go on to administrative comments. We'll start over in the corner. Patrick, do you have anything else to add? Zach? Chelsea? Oh, online orders too. Good.
For those
Great, thank you.
For those watching at home or listening, watching the, the recording, whenever an employee is not at a microphone, it's, it makes it challenging to, to follow along. But the, the statement was made that the Youth Advisory Council member had, had left because we are in the middle of AP right now with, at the high school. And then there was discussion about a, a reiteration of the fundraiser at Chipotle, which is on what day?
June 3rd.
June 3rd. And was it, was there one more thing? From 4:00 to 8:00 PM at the Ford Road location. You can order in person or online.
Yes. And it will support the Youth Advisory Committee. Their endowment.
It supports their endowment.
Thank you. Thank you. Victor, do you have anything to add? Michelle?
They have nothing to add.
John?
Some activities coming up this weekend. There's a glass art workshop out at the Village Arts Factory on Thursday. Friday night, if you're not busy, should be a, a beautiful evening on Friday. There's a outdoor cultural movie night on the lawn of the Cherry Hill School. Come out and watch Disney Pixar's Luca. It's always a nice feeling to be out on the lawn and especially with a, a nice warm summer-like, spring evening on Friday. So come out and enjoy that. And then of course, the farmer's market season has launched. So every Sunday from now through October, the farmer's market will be in full action and they've got a Disney theme weekend going on. So all the activities, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday out there will have a theme to them. And there's also a park in the park event going on at the dog park on Sunday as well. So lots of, lots of activities happening.
Thank you. Greg? So remember, this is the last meeting of May. So we won't, so if anything is happening from now to the end of May.
We're able to, I'm going to go into early June, if that's okay. We, we established with MCWS, Eid is going to be June 6th, which is great for us because that is a Friday. So that we'll be able to hold that event at Independence Park, where we previously had a conflict with the soccer tryouts. So June 6th, the morning at Independence Park.
One more big thing happening in Independence Park?
Memorial Cup. That'll be Memorial Day weekend.
That's right. Soccer tournament. The big soccer tournament of Canton, Canton Cup. That's a big one. We know a lot of kids will be participating. Chad?
Nothing extraordinary, but I've come to appreciate the taxidermy, Montessori myself as I pass by.
He does both.
I would note on the same plane, I have seen a propane shop that also doubles as a bridal shop in Lenawee County. So
Yes.
Pretty cool. That's all I have.
What about the pond muck, Snow Hill?
Put it down, Patrick, as a recommended use. Propane and bridal shop.
I have nothing to compete with that.
Well, both of you have had graduates. So we, at the academies, you've had police and fire graduates in the last
Some new hires coming on as well. We got two starting on Monday and I believe you have other three?
We have five new hires, three of which we sponsored, two we picked up pre-service process, thanks to HR. HR's been, well, I've been helping, I believe, I don't know, close Chris is, but we're fully staffed on the police side.
Very good. Some great graduations and some swearing ins coming up.
Madam Supervisor, was, was any of the directors or any chiefs appointed to anything by the governor recently?
Yes. Let's talk about that. Who was appointed?
I saw that. Somebody, somebody showed me that.
Yeah.
Recently, I was appointed to the Organized Retail Crime Advisory Board by the governor.
Yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations. You're going to stop all the organized retail crime in the country.
Put himself out of a job.
Thank you. Dave?
Earlier today, I had a conversation with trustee Berninski about some, some construction barrels are showing up on Beck Road. As you know, and that's Beck and Geddes is the, the major road repaving project for this year. The contractor jumped the gun, moved a little forward quickly, which is kind of different than what has happened in the rear of the building here. But that, that is going to start, that project's going to start next week. So I got some updates I can share with you that the communications team, Amy Hamilton, is going to be sharing this. Beck Road from Michigan Avenue to Cherry Hill will be a milliner surfing that will take approximately 20 days, weather dependent. Traffic is going to be maintained in both directions during construction, using flags to, to make sure there's no problems. So no detours or, no detours on, or lane closures on Beck. Geddes Road from Denton to Canton Center is also a milliner resurfacing and will follow the work on Beck and take approximately 40 days, weather dependent, for construction and have full, full lane closures and detours during construction because there's only maintained one direction open at a time. Eastbound will be closed first and then westbound will follow after.
Thank you. Also, Dave, want to talk about, we did just get an award for composting. What award, award was that?
So we were in, by the Environmental Managers Association, we were recognized for our, our food waste composting efforts, which were only one of, I think, two in the whole state of Michigan that's doing what we're doing. So we, John Selmy took that award on behalf of the township a couple of weeks ago.
And another thing, in Michigan Green Communities, we got gold status again.
Yes, the work of the township is paying off through the Michigan Green Communities Challenge. There'll be some announcements later on. We'll be awarded a gold status. We have gained some points in some of the work that urban forestry that Zach has done and some of the work that facility's done on energy efficiency. So we'll continue to work on, on gaining more points as we go along. I know they had a new level that we'll be looking for platinum.
So now there's a platinum level we have to reach. We were at the top.
We get to. We can be the first.
That's right.
We're striving for platinum.
Do it.
I forgot to mention one thing as well. That's pretty exciting is tomorrow, our members are driving down to pick up the three ambulances that we ordered
That's right.
two and a half years ago. So
Yeah, two and a half years ago.
They finally came in.
Hit the sirens on the way back?
Well, I'm not going to drive them back, but somebody might.
That'd be fun.
We'll get you guys a viewing of those once we get them back here at the station. We'll get you guys viewing of those once we get them back here at the station.
Great. Thank you. Joe, do you have anything? Want to talk about the May 19th court date with the radioactive waste, the status?
Court date in, oh, sorry. So the next court date in our efforts to stop radioactive waste from coming to Michigan from the state of New York is on May 19th. On May 19th, there'll be a hearing on our request for a preliminary injunction. And that would essentially permanently enjoin Wayne Disposal, which is the landfill site in Van Buren Township, from accepting radioactive waste from New York for the pendency of this specific case. So, you know, we're getting ready for that hearing, and it's a public, you know, it's in a courtroom, so it's a public endeavor. So folks want to attend the hearing, they can attend the hearing. And yeah, so it's coming up, May 19th.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll start at this end. Amara, do you have anything?
No, actually. I don't have anything, but it's great to see y'all, so thank you. And thank you, Victor, for fixing all of my computer troubles during the meeting.
Kate?
On a personal note, next time I see everyone, I will be a mother-in-law.
Joining the club.
Because my son is getting married on Friday.
Oh, my gosh.
This has been a very exciting week for us and will continue to be until Saturday, when I can finally relax. But I did want to wish Lauren and Ned a wonderful life together. And I am so excited that they're getting married, and we're going to party.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And I hope everyone had a happy Mother's Day.
Oh, thank you. Michael?
I will be traveling Friday and Saturday to the great state of Alabama, to Auburn University for, to finish, take my last course in my, from the election center, my certification. So I'll be super excited to get home because Auburn, they don't even have an airport. It's like, really not very accessible. I got to fly into Atlanta, it's a whole thing. But I'm super geeked about that, very excited, but be good to be home when that's all done and get that certification out of the way. But I'll be traveling, yeah, really early Friday morning. And then on top of that, we got the final map for the precincts, so we're going to be calling the election commission meeting probably when I get back. So we'll be reaching out about that. And we're working on a lease right now with Life Church. It'll be our first lease of a polling location. It's not uncommon in other communities. It's the first time, to my knowledge, it's happened in Canton, so we're breaking ground on that. And I'm really, really excited about that location. It's going to reduce the travel time for a lot of folks in Canton Township to the polls. Very geeked about that. And on top of that, oh, there was a comment during public comment about the kind of the irony of planting trees under power lines and, you know, I love sarcasm myself, and I have a very dry sense of humor as well. But there's this really cool scene in Ted Lasso where he's like playing darts, and he says, you know, "It's better to be curious than judgmental." Because in the end, Ted Lasso ends up winning because he's really good at darts. And the guy never even bothered to ask if he was good at darts and knew how to throw darts. And that happens frequently, especially when we observe governments because we always just like assume that they don't know what they're doing or like, well, they're bureaucratic and these archaic processes, and like, it doesn't make any sense. Look at that. It doesn't make any sense. But I like to talk to Zach, obviously, about trees because I'm super nerdy. And go look at those trees we planted underneath the power lines and check out what species of trees those are, and then look at the height that those trees grow to, and then look at the height of the power lines. It's almost like our arborist spends a lot of time thinking about the trees we plant and where we plant them. That's all I'm going to say. I don't want to spoil it for anybody. But be curious, not judgmental, and you may get a cool education. I wish the township or the county had been wiser when they planted the street trees maybe 40 or 50 years ago. But we're definitely making good choices now when it comes to trees.
Thank you. Summer?
Congratulations to Ned and Lauren. I remember when Ned was in high school, so it's very excited, very exciting that he is getting married this Friday. I recently spent a few weeks in France on a vacation, and one of the, and I went to about five different cities. And one of the things that I noticed in each of the cities was they had a town square. And it was really cool just to sit in the town square and watch the people. And like, they weren't like elaborate. They were just an area for people to gather. Some had fountains, some had, well, they all had merry-go-rounds. I just want to note that.
Those are fun.
But, you know, just watching the kids play and people sitting at restaurants and people watching, it was pretty cool, and it made me really excited about what we're building here in Canton, so, yeah.
Merry-go-round.
Just need a merry-go-round.
Not much to add, but I think Canton Cup is coming up in two weeks. So be careful driving on the roads. It'll be really crowded around this area. And I wish everyone had a good Mother's Day. And congratulations to Kate for, you know, having a new member in the family. That's all I have.
Thank you. So a couple of things that are coming up. Barchester Park, it's complete. We're going to have a ribbon cutting there soon, the new park area. And then another thing is, so the US Army Corps of Engineers is working hard in modeling our drainage system in some of the hotspots in Canton. And one of the items that we looked at recently were we utilized drones. We use drone technology to look for blockages. So another great use for drones. And of course, we found some more beavers, so we're looking at having them maybe have their houses moved a little bit, let some water through. So blockage is big, you know. We have 91 miles of drainage systems throughout Canton Township, and blockage happens, you know, and that does cause issues. I know people say it was not just blockage, but that's, I think, they gave a percentage from Wayne County, didn't they, in terms of how much blockages actually did contribute to? I'll have to give it later. I did write it down. But, so do watch for blockages behind your house also and help it along. If you see beavers building a dam, let us know, and we will help them out moving somewhere else. All right, anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Before?
Motion made by Clerk Seager, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.